Welcome candidates and viewers to the 2021 Conansville Area School Board Primary Election Live Broadcast Forum, sponsored by Armstrong and the Daily Courier. I'm Marilyn Forbes, and I will serve as moderator for tonight's forum. Armstrong and the Courier would like to thank the Conansville Area Community Ministries for providing the Edwin S. Porter Theater for this event. We would like to thank the nine candidates who have agreed to participate in the forum tonight. In alphabetical order, they are PJ Cartt, Donald Grinaldo, David Martre, James Moore, Michael O'Matic, Dave Panzella, Bob Renzi, Debbie Schubert-Trader, and Randy Wyble. Candidate Michael Coconor sends his regrets as a work commitment prevented him from participating tonight. The candidates are vying for four open seats on a nine-member school board in the primary election, which will be held on May 18. Primary elections are designed for political parties to nominate candidates for office to run in the fall general election. However, school board elections are different because candidates are permitted, although not required, to cross-file and have their names appear on both Democratic and Republican party ballots. All candidates in this election have indeed cross-filled. Votes received in each party primary are counted separately, not in total as in the primary. As a result, it is possible that as many as eight candidates could appear on the general election ballot. It is also possible that four candidates could each be the top four vote-getters in each primary party. In the November general election, the process changes, as votes for candidates who appear on both party ballots are tallied together. Now, onto the forum. The process tonight will comprise of five different parts. Each candidate will have two minutes to present an opening statement. Following that, each candidate will then have two minutes to answer each of three questions in rotation that were prepared by Armstrong and the Daily Courier. The questions will be posed by Daily Courier reporter Joe Abramowitz. Candidates have received these questions in advance. The forum will conclude with a one-minute closing statement made by each candidate. The candidate order in each selection was determined this evening by lottery, and it was determined before broadcast. Because of COVID-19 safety concerns, the forum is not open to the public. Tonight's forum was planned by Armstrong producer Rick Feike, Armstrong community marketing manager Chip Rowan, and Daily Courier managing editor Roxanne Abramowitz. The forum is being broadcast live on Armstrong Neighborhoods channels 20 and 100, its Facebook page, and YouTube channel. Armstrong will additionally rebroadcast the forum at later dates. Okay, it's time to meet our candidates. Now, first one up is going to be Michael O'Matic. Michael O'Matic is currently retired after 20 years of service to the Conansville School District. He graduated from Conansville School District, as well as his wife and three children. After high school, he graduated from Penn State University with a degree in engineering. He currently has three grandchildren attending schools in the district. He is in his fourth year as a member of the Conansville School Board.
Good evening. I am currently in my fourth year as a board member of Conansville Area School District. I have not voted for a tax increase in the past three years, and I have voted for a balanced budget for those years. I have voiced my concerns on the test scores in the district for the first day I was a board member. Our students should receive the best education possible and will continue to be a voice for them. I believe the safety of students is every employee's Conansville School District's responsibility. We need to transport our students to school safely, keep them safe while they're in school, and then transport them home. I strongly support that every student, staff member, be treated the same and fairly without exception.
Thank you. Okay, number two is Dave Panzella. Dave Panzella is just finishing up his first term on the Conansville Area School Board. He has been a resident of Conansville School District his entire life, graduating from the district. He resides in Bullskin Township with his wife Brenda Nastowski Panzella. He has two daughters, Lee and Allison Panzella, and two grandchildren, Kinley and Vincent. He is the owner and operator of Panzella Trucking and Excavating that has served the area for 40 years. He is also involved in other business interests in the area. He is the current president of the Conansville Soccer Club, where he has served on the board for approximately 20 years. He is a member of the Immaculate Conception Church and a life member of the New Haven Hose Company. He is a member of the Pleasant Valley Water Authority Board of Directors and a member of the Vacancy Board for Bullskin Township. He is a member of the Masons Lodge 346.
I would just like to thank everybody tonight for this opportunity to be here. I am on my fourth year at the school board, which I have served. It is a learning experience. I have learned a lot on the educational side. I felt bringing my business background, I was pretty solid with the business side, and I see where they work together. So I'm hoping that tonight I can answer the questions and make sure that the voters understand where I'm coming from and have their support for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Okay, number three, we have James Moore. James Moore is a 1997 graduate of Conansville Area Senior High and a lifelong resident of the school district. He is the husband and proud father of three children, two of which are middle school students in the district. He is the former president of the Conansville Youth Basketball League, in which he is no longer active. He is the founder of the AARC and owner of the Moore eWaste Services. He has coached various youth sports, including football, wrestling, basketball, and soccer, and has coached hundreds of youths over the last decade.
Hello, I just wanted to thank everybody for having me here today. I just wanted to say I've decided to run, because over the past few years, after working with hundreds of families in the school district, talking with them and students, it just felt like there were some issues that I feel that could be addressed. I believe that the primary goal of the school board is to put the students' best interests in the forefront of all decisions that are made. The board needs to work with the community, administration, teachers, and students to provide the best education for all the students involved. As Marilyn said, I am a graduate of Conansville School District and currently have two children in the school system. I've seen how some of the decisions have affected them over the past 10 years, and working with a lot of the students, they've come to me with some of the issues that they felt needed to be addressed. I come into this race with no personal agenda. I want to work with the board to help make the district somewhere where families and students can be proud of, and provide the students with the best overall education and prepares them for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number four, we have Dr. PJ Cartt. Dr. PJ Cartt is a retired administrator for the West Virginia United Health System, WVUHS, where he served in a number of executive roles, including the Assistant Vice President of Operations and Vice President of Medical Affairs and Quality for the United Hospital Center. Prior to his time at WVUHS, Cartt was the manager of administration for the eastern region of the county for United Health Group. An active member in the community, PJ is a trustee for Highlands Hospital in Conansville. He is an assisting minister and lecturer at St. John's Lutheran Church. Additionally, he serves as the president of the church council, a position that he has held for more than a decade. In addition to serving on the Conansville Area School District Board of Directors from 2009 through 2013, PJ also served on the Board of Directors for Intermediate Unit One. Upon being elected in 2009, Cartt participated in the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Training Course for new school board members. In addition, he graduated from the Local Government Academy's Newly Elected Officials Course. PJ also served as the Vice President of the Parent Teacher Group, PTG, at Bullskin Township Elementary for many years. He is also an active parent volunteer that helped with the musical at Conansville Area Junior High School, now the middle school, and Conansville Area High School. PJ resides in Bullskin Township with his wife Linda. They are the parents of Parker, a proud graduate of Conansville Area High School.
Good evening. My name is PJ Cartt, and as Mrs. Forbes said, I served on the school board from 2009 to 2013. The district's mission is to provide the best opportunities for our students in a safe and challenging environment. But even prior to the pandemic, we weren't giving them the best opportunity that we could. In fact, I'm here to tell you that we have an educational crisis in the district. When you look at our data, we find that even before the pandemic, nearly half of our elementary students were not proficient in English Language Arts. Depending on building by building, we had between 40% and 60% of our students who weren't proficient in English Language Arts. Meanwhile, in math, 48.5% to 57% weren't proficient. At the middle school, 58% of the students aren't proficient when it comes to English Language Arts, and 77.3% aren't proficient when it comes to mathematics. We've got to address this, and in order to do it, it's got to be a collaboration between the stakeholders. We've got to get parents, students, teachers, administrators, both from the building and district level, and board together and working on this at once. We can't wait for data to come back for the PSSAs. We've got to start now. Early literacy has to be a priority. Research has shown over and over that if students aren't on grade level by the end of third grade, they're four times more likely to drop out of school and not finish high school. Students living in poverty are also three times more at risk. So we've got a big problem here when you take the fact that 33% of our students are at poverty. Only 21% of the people in the area have a college degree, so I would like to see us work to put in an early college program in the high school and the career center so that students could graduate with an associate's degree at the same time they're graduating from their high school diploma. I've worked with a local college already, and they're willing to work with us for $25 a credit hour, so we could get 60 hours of that associate's degree for as low as $1,500, and I'm sure parents would be happy to make that investment, and we also have some funding we might be able to pursue through grants. If elected, I will work hard for the students and make sure they have those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cartt. Okay, up next, we have Don Grinaldo. Donald S. Grinaldo is a lifelong resident and taxpayer to the Conansville Area School District, and has been happily married to his wife Kathy Grinaldo for 45 years. They have three grandchildren who are pursuing their education in the Conansville Area School District. A graduate of Penn State University, Don has held several jobs since the age of 15 and served as an educator for 35 years until his retirement. Don has continued his services for two decades on the Carnegie Free Library Board of Directors, and for more half that time, he has served as the vice president. Don is beginning his third five-year term on the State Theater of Arts Board, where he has served as treasurer. Don and his wife Kathy have ministered as eucharistic ministers and have mentored couples for over 25 years, who are planning to enter the life of marriage.
Thank you. First, I would wish to thank the Daily Courier and Armstrong Cable for organizing and hosting this public forum. This evening, we have been given the opportunity to livestream to our parents, grandparents, staff, and most importantly, the taxpayers who pay for the educational services here in Conansville. Tonight, you will hear some ideas on how the school district is customizing its traditional summer learning programs in ways to strike a balance between the academic and enrichment needs and including the social, economic, well-being in the coming year. The question I hope to answer for you tonight will focus on how those tax dollars are used to fund the services our children need, and why I am asking for your support in seeking my second term on the Conansville School Board. I said four years ago at a forum much like this, held at Penn State Fayette, that my vote as a school board director will always be based on two factors. One, does it benefit and serve the needs of our students? And two, is it financially responsible to the taxpayer? Those two must work for me to vote yes on spending tax dollars. I am proud to be able to stand here tonight and say that I have kept that promise to the students and to the taxpayers of Conansville School District, and tonight make the same promise again, if I'm so honored to be reelected. When it comes to spending limited resources to improve the district, both the children and the taxpayers matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grinaldo. Okay, up next, we have Randy S. Wyble. Randy S. Wyble is a longtime member and stakeholder of the Conansville Area School District. He raised four children, now adults, who all attended and graduated from Conansville Schools. They were involved in athletics, music and arts, and academic programs. For 20 years, Randy worked for the Wheeling Pittsburgh Steel Corporation until his untimely layoff. It was at this time that he embraced the opportunity and earned his Bachelor of Science degree in education with a dual major of elementary and special education for kindergarten through grade 12. He then further earned certifications in social studies and continued his education to remain current in educational trends. Randy worked for 28 years as an educator in the Conansville Area School District. Randy also served as assistant track coach at Junior High West for 12 years, and a basketball coach and football coach for the Tri-Town area. Upon retirement in 2014, he remained active within the community and schools, including substitute teaching and transportation support for special needs students.
Thank you very much. It's our job to give the students of Conansville Area High School a solid, well-rounded education base, while helping to contribute to their success and their future endeavors. I have no particular interest to promote any hidden agenda, and I strongly oppose all forms of nepotism. I will support any hiring of any individual for their ability and/or their experience, not for who they know. Every employee of the district will be held to a high standard of performance and integrity. My goal as a director would be to make the students centered and to make decisions that are best for the student and the district taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyble. Okay, next, we have Robert Renzi. Robert Renzi is a lifelong resident of the Conansville Area School District. He taught school for 39 years, beginning in the Greensburg, Dyces, and Geibel High School for six years, and 33 years as a teacher and coach in the Conansville Area School District, teaching chemistry and other sciences, and coaching basketball and baseball. He also taught classes with the local intermediates to teachers on dealing with violence in our schools for many years, and currently conducts active shooting training sessions to staff and students of local school districts. He worked for many years for the airlines with a program called Air Crew Combative Training for pilots and flight attendants. He has been married to Mary Margaret Traynor for 46 years, and they have two children and four grandchildren, one of which is presently part of the Conansville School District.
Good evening. One of the primary goals of our school district is to be to emphasize to every student the importance and necessity to be a lifelong learner, so they can adapt to a changing world into the late 21st century. Many of our younger students will be living into the 22nd century, and a very effective school board must have a clear vision for the future with definite goals. I feel I have sound judgment and even temper most of the time, a genuine willingness to collaborate and sincere interest in the education of all students. Effective board members must work as a team, which isn't always the case, and be respectful of the other person's opinions. I was always prepared as a teacher and coach, and would therefore always come prepared to all meetings as a school director. I'd strongly encourage our administrators to work closely with all teachers and listen to their suggestions and needs. No one knows better of the problems students encounter than the daily classroom teacher. A school district is built around the general areas of the academics, the arts, fitness, and athletics. Every one of those areas is important to provide a foundation for a lifelong learning. To accomplish that, we need to provide an environment as free of violence and bullying as possible. I'd like to see us incorporate into the grades K to 12 a very aggressive anti-bully program that also deals with cyberbullying. No student can reach their maximum potential under the threat of violence or bullying. Another major problem we sometimes encounter is class size, especially in the K to five grades. All elementary classrooms that have no more than 20 to 22 students, and when numbers exceed that, another classroom teacher is needed. It's impossible to have effective learning if class size is reached 30 and above. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Okay, next, we have Debbie Schubert-Trader. She was born and raised in Conansville and currently resides in Dunbar Township with her husband Calvin and two daughters Paige and Annie. While she currently works in healthcare, she has over 20 years of experience in human resources. In addition to their full-time jobs, Debbie and her husband also operate their asphalt seal coating, I'm sorry, silk coating business, trade seal coating, for the past 16 years throughout the city of Conansville and in neighboring towns. Debbie is a graduate of the Conansville Area School and California University of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. As Marilyn mentioned, I'm a proud Conansville graduate, and so are my daughters. We loved our years at Conansville, and I want all the students that are going to school in Conansville and graduating in the future to feel the same way. The reason I'm running for school director is because, over the last several years, I'm concerned that some of the decisions that are being made aren't always in the interest of the school district, the taxpayers, and the students. I would like to change that. I would like to be part of the decision-making that can make Conansville School District even better than it is today. I have concerns with the safety in the school and certainly the education. So if you vote for me, you'll know that my interests will primarily be the students and also the taxpayers and the district itself, and also no hidden agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, finally, we have David Martre. David Martre was born in Conansville and is a graduate of the Conansville Area High School. His degrees are a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education. While attending college, he worked commercial construction. After teaching industrial technology and coaching football, baseball, and golf in Marysville, Ohio, and Somerset, PA, he then returned to his hometown and taught industrial technology, retiring after 36 years. He served 16 years as a councilman for the South Conansville Borough until 1998, at which time he did not seek reelection. He has served for the past four years as a school board director. For the past 50 years, he has taught adult and youth Sunday School classes, and currently serves as the head usher and deacon. He taught martial arts at the Culver Karate in Conansville for 25 years, and participated in fundraisers for the ALS Foundation, having a brother-in-law, Joe Horazo, who was a victim of ALS and passed away. He has been married to wife Wanda for 54 years, and the two have two adult children and four grandchildren, three who are currently students in the Conansville School District.
Just like to take a moment to thank Roxanne and Joe and Abramowitz, Armstrong and the porter for inviting us here this evening and hosting this. Like was read, you know, I bring some experience with me to the school district. I've been on for four years, been on various committees, and sometimes there's a lot of tough decisions to be made, and especially through this past year with the pandemic. And the best thing we can do, that I have done, in my opinion, is I stay within the guidelines of the CDC and the DOH, and trying to get our students educated the best we can with what we have to work with. can with what we have to work with. But I've always stated that if you have any concerns, any of the constituents out there, I'm available anytime to answer any of your questions, and I will continue to do that if I'm reelected again. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, we all had a chance to learn a little bit about each of the candidates, and now we're on to question number one. As we said before, they were all chosen randomly prior to broadcast, and up first is going to be Bob Renzi. Each of the candidates will have two minutes to answer the question, and as soon as Bob comes up here with me. He's going to join me here at the podium, and then Joe Abramowitz from the Daily Courier is going to read the question. Again, each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions.
Under current State Department of Education regulations, annual real estate tax increases must not exceed established minimum. With few exceptions, increases greater than the index percentage require public approval via voter referendum. Would you support periodic small millage increases as a means to keep pace with rising costs, many of which are out of district control?
Thank you. My short answer to that question is no. I'd not support periodic tax increases to keep pace with rising costs. We have a capital reserve fund to meet emergencies. We also have a fund balance for other needs, such as if state funding is reduced or adding new staff to keep class size low. You could have some class size increase in September after the district budget's already passed. If class size, some elementary schools, if they approach 30, money would be available to add another classroom teacher, which I already addressed that, but class size, my opening statement. If an adequate fund balance is not maintained, we could end up with a situation we encountered about 10 years ago when a new governor was elected and signed a budget cutting aid to all public schools throughout the state. In Conneville, we had to lay off nearly 50 teachers and many other positions in a lot of other areas. That mass layoff caused class sizes to increase drastically and deprived our kids of the best education they deserve. So to directly answer the original question, taxes should only be raised to keep our fund balance in the 5% to 10% range. A district should not raise taxes if their fund balance is more than 8% of expenditures. For example, if you have a budget of $80 million, 8% of that would be 6.4 million. If you have more than 6.4 million in your fund balance, there's no reason to raise taxes. If you have less than 6.4 million, you can raise taxes at that time. So there are limitations when you can or can't. Right now, we have about $8.4 million in our fund balance, so we're very good, so I don't see a need to raise taxes for quite a while. Thank you.
Number two for question one is going to be James Moore.
Short answer to that also is no. I would not support any increases to the millage. There should be no reason for a school district to raise taxes if it can work within its budget. If for any reason the budget is off to where they feel that a tax increase should be made, we should find ways to budget it and by making cuts or any changes, but with doing so, we also got to make sure we do not affect the quality of education to our students. We should always work for a balanced budget. If millage increases are a topic, that means we are not working hard enough to balance that budget. The goal should always be a balanced budget within the school district. Other than that, the simple answer is no. There should never be tax increases. The school should always be working within the budget without any tax increases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number three for question one is Donald Granaldo.
The need to raise taxes in increments every year is within the law, but should not be automatically occurred. Our district has been allocated under the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund this year. ESER I, funding can be spent on planning and implementing activities related to the summer learning and supplement after-school programs, including providing classroom instruction or online learning during the summer months. ESER II, which we have also received, funding can be levied in a wider range of activities, including all uses in the previous ESER I, as well as initiatives associated with measurement and remeasurement of learning loss, and the effort to ready our school facilities for reopening in the fall. ESER III, which is the newest one, I don't believe it has actually arrived yet, but it is in Harrisburg, the money, at least 20% of that total, legislature is focused on using for summer learning and including mandates for several state and district level set-asides for summer programs through the evidence-based intervention. I would not raise local property taxes and have voted no to increases in the last three years, and will do so again this year if it comes up. What should we be doing with our ESER money? To build a fund balance for that cliff year that is going to be around the corner in 2024, 2025? Advanced purchases, cost of textbooks, incremental materials, return investment on projects, potentially lowering our future expenditures. Careful consideration before property taxes increases should be well thought out. Again, I would not raise your local taxes, property taxes, and would support a line-by-line annual budget renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Mr. Wyble.
All the people I talk to who ask me, if you get in there, if we happen to support you and we vote you in, are you going to raise taxes? Geez, it's really not up to me. But if I had an answer to that, I'd say no, I wouldn't raise the taxes. And if I would raise the taxes, it's like I'm, you know, I'm speaking in circles here, but raise them in small increments if you really have to. Make it the last, I mean, the last resort. Okay? Because this is Fayette County. Fayette County don't have any money. Okay? It's one of the poorest counties in the state. Look into other avenues. Okay? Investigate all the avenues. You've got to look into other means of balancing the budget, such as looking through attrition and smarter spending. Explore and investigate everything, just don't say we're going to raise the taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyble. Okay, up next we have David Martre.
When looking at raising the millage on our school district, I kind of approach it at who are the stakeholders involved in this? And first of all, you've got to come up with the students, you've got the employees, and you've got the constituents. Where does the money come from? How are we going to fund all this, even though the rising cost is going up? Well, you only can get, we only have money coming in, our revenue, from federal, state, local, and grants. So what I try to do, and I've done over the past years, is look at the budget, look at the wants and the needs, and then separate them, and then try to go down through and see what really is needed at this time. And there's one thing that I won't do is cut any services to the children or education. I want to try to enhance that. If you look at the federal program, I've stayed on top of that for four years, and I make sure we get our federal money. That's $2.5 million a year. I try to make sure we get that, and I've, it's, I guess I might agitate some of the administration, but I keep on that in February. I start in February because it is due, and I like to stay on top of it so we make sure that we get our money. But looking at right now, over the past three years, going into my fourth year, I haven't increased, I tried to avoid increasing the millage, and I have done that the last three years, and I can't see me changing that going into this year right now, because it has worked for me with what I've looked at, and I've seen how I can get this grant money I'm working on. I'm looking at two grants right now that I have to share with our curriculum director that could possibly help us. So that being said, I'll do my best for the constituents, and I'll work hard to try to procure any money I can get for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up for question one, we have Michael O'Matic.
As I stated in my opening remarks, I've been on the school board for three years, and in those three years, I have not voted for a tax increase. We have had balanced budgets. I believe we will have a balanced budget this school year. Not a proponent of small increases. I believe small shortfalls in a budget can be handled by simply watching our spending and filling personnel vacancies when they are absolutely needed. Unfunded mandates are a serious problem for school districts with limited tax base. Each mandate needs to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis and not just an automatic tax increase to the index. So once again, tax increases are serious things to consider, and I will not take those lightly, and I will not raise taxes just to raise taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up for question number one, we have Debbie Schubert-Trader.
I would not support periodic millage tax increases either. A tax increase, regardless of how it's done, is still a tax increase. I know over the last several years, there's been several board members who were for tax increases. Some of the board members that are re-running again this term, Mr. O'Matic, Mr. Granaldo, and Mr. Martre, oppose those tax increases, and I agree with them. We have a lot of senior citizens in our area, and the senior citizens are on fixed incomes. Regardless of how a tax increase is handled, it would still hurt them financially. Tax increases also should not be raised due to poor decision-making. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schubert-Trader. Okay, next up we have PJ Cart.
To answer the question directly and simply, the answer is no. I don't support tax increases or millage increases, and I go back to my record when I was a board member before, and I always voted no and did not support any tax increases. According to the Census Bureau, our median household income in Conneville is $35,029. Additionally, 24% of the people in the area are living in poverty, so people certainly can't afford it. We have to learn to look for creative means and grow it for grants whenever possible when we need extra money. There's also a lawsuit for fair school funding because Pennsylvania is 44th in the nation in terms of state funding, and the state does a poor job of that, so hopefully that lawsuit, when it's resolved, will also help Conneville. I know a lot of people have asked questions about this, so I want to try to give a little bit of education to the public. The board can't just raise taxes to whatever amount they want to like they could one day in the past. There was a special legislation session in 2006, and at that time, when that happened, the districts had to follow what is called Act I Index. And under the Act I Index, even if the board did raise taxes to the Act I Index in Conneville, the average house is assessed at $60,000, so that would be $31 a year for a tax increase, and for homes that take it to $100,000, it would be $52 a year. So it's not like the board could just decide we want to raise taxes, whatever. But to be very clear, I do not support it. When I was there, we had balanced budgets, and we also had in excess of $12 million in the fund balance, and for, to make it simple, for fund balance, it's kind of like a savings account or whatever. So the answer is no, I don't support tax increases or millage increases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cart. Okay, the final candidate to be answering question number one this evening is Dave Penzella.
I'll give you my quick thing personally on property taxes. I hate property taxes. I've hated them from day one. I mean, you work your whole life, you buy a house, you buy property, and what do you do? You have to pay taxes. If you miss that, you can lose everything. But now that I'm on the school board, I understand that property taxes are a big part of what happens with our budget. And I would not raise taxes. I've also been part of the Finance Committee for the last four years that has not raised taxes, and I've been a big proponent of wasteful spending, and we have cut the balance, the budget. Of course, two years ago, we did go over $220,000. We did forget to mention that on a balanced budget. It drove me crazy. I don't like it. We shouldn't be doing that. We should be able to watch every line item, and we were spending someone else's money. We should be able to make sure that we are thrifty, we provide everything that we need, and we don't waste any money. I know also, just, we brought in an extra $5.2 million to the district. I saw a few years ago where we were overpaying on a couple bonds. We were paying 6.4% and 5.9%. I looked, and I said, you know, this is ridiculous on the Finance Committee. We had a bond committee, a bond person come in, he affirmed that. We got the bonds lowered, we're paying the same amount, we got $5.2 million back. We paid, just paid cash for a roof for Dunbar Township, we paid cash for a roof for the Vo-Tec, we resurfaced a track, and we resurfaced a tennis courts, and that was all paid for by money that was going out that we should have not been, we were overpaying in interest. So I think as a board, we were proud of that, and we still have some money left there. But our fund balance, just to let everybody know, the only reason we've been building on it now, but we only had a fund balance because Plan Con gave us back 4.9 million, so we still need to be thrifty with our money and watch how we're spending it. But no, I would not go for a tax increase unless absolutely needed to cover costs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to all nine of our candidates for their answers to the first question. As we explained at the beginning, the order in which the candidates are going to be appearing is going to be different for each five segments. Now for question number two, first up is going to be Debbie.
Thank you.
Schubert-Trader. See, I have to have my notes here. Debbie is going to come up to the podium. As soon as she gets here, Joe Abramowitz is going to give her the second question. She and the rest of the candidates are then going to have two minutes to answer the question. Okay, Debbie, you're up.
As the COVID-19 pandemic enters its second year, a new term has arisen, lost learning. How can this problem be tackled by the Conneville Area School District, both financially and logistically?
Unfortunately, lost learning isn't just a Conneville problem. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, leading to school closings and online learning, schools across the country are facing this issue. I believe we first need to look at what COVID relief funding is available, and then implement additional after-school tutoring programs or even classes in each school to help students that may need additional help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up second for question number two is going to be James Moore. Okay, up second for question number two is going to be James Moore.
Lost learning is something that has affected the whole country and students across the country, and for the most part, it's been a burden on many school boards. It's a tough thing to come into a pandemic. We don't know what we're dealing with. We don't know what we're going to have or how long it will last. But it has affected the students of Connelsville School District rather heavily. I do believe that in the fall, we do need to get back to five-day-a-week classes. We need to get back to, I know this is a bad word, but get back to some normalcy in the lives of these students. I think we need to increase the Falcon Online Academy curriculum to try to get it more in line with the face-to-face environment curriculum. Other than that, we just need to keep working to try to do what's best for the students. Those that need help, we need to provide help in any means we can, whether it be at the school tutoring, help within the school, reach out to the community, see what help there is out in the community also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up third for question number two is Michael O'Matic.
We have found that some of our students have done well with online learning while others have struggled. The school district needs to provide additional programs for students who have fallen behind. These enrichment programs could be offered during the school day as well as before and after the school day. Summer classes are also a possibility. I am more in favor of trying to provide these services during the school day, if at all possible. The reason being, many of our students do not have access to transportation before or after school hours. Both parents may work and cannot get their children to school, and the older students who may drive may not have access to a vehicle. The school district will receive additional money to use for students who have fallen behind due to the lost learning. We need to make sure we use this money wisely and for the betterment of our students' education.
Thank you. Okay, up next for question number two is PJ Cart.
Lost learning is a serious issue, and we can't wait until next school year to start addressing it. It needs to be addressed now, and it needs to be done collaboratively. We've got to get students, parents, teachers, administrators, and board members to the table and working on it. We need to be looking at research. We need to look at evidence-based practices. We need to look at best practices so that we can make sure that our students go back to that mission statement and receive the best opportunities here in Connelsville. As I shared in my opening, we were already behind the eight ball before the pandemic, so it's only gotten worse. There are a number of ideas we could explore over the summer, such as reading camps, math camps, STEAM camps, and I say STEAM because it's science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics. We too often leave out the arts in the district. And credit acceleration, such as FISED and driver's ed that we've done in the past, and we can look at other options there as well. First, any efforts that we do, they have to be data-driven. We have to diagnose the students' learning gaps so that we know what they need, because there's a lot of variation from student to student, so that we make sure we're meeting those needs individually, so that they're able to move on to the next subject or the next grade successfully the following year. We can't wait on PSSA tests to find out what those learning gaps are. We also are going to have to use a trauma-informed approach as we approach this for next year because when they walk back into the classroom, it's not business as usual. The students and teachers have undergone a lot of mental and emotional stress. How are we going to pay for it financially? For the second part of the question, the district will receive money through the American Rescue Plan, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, and those funds are able to be used from now through September 30, 2024. So with a collaborative approach, we can do a lot with that money. At least 20% of that money has to go to learning loss through evidence-based interventions, including summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day, and comprehensive after-school programs. Programs must attend in that 20% to the students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And finally, the remaining 80% of that money can be used to maintain school staff, provide professional training, extending the school day or year, purchasing technology, providing mental health support, and undertaking priority school facility repairs and improvements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up for question two, we have Randy Wyble.
Every kid or every student in this district is at least six months behind where they're supposed to be because of this pandemic. We need to look at this like it's some sort of a disability, and since it does, you know, resemble a disability. The special ed population would see it, and they would address it with an IUP, with Individual Education Program. And the regular population, they will see it and, you know, and address it with their learning profiles, which resembles an IUP. We should continue to offer extracurricular programs, after-school tutoring, enrichment programs, extra online classes offered to the students through the FOLA, that is the Falcon Online Learning Academy. Also, summer school for everyone who is interested, not only the students who are failing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up for question two, we have David Martre.
I'm going to talk about the financial side of it first and the funding that we received. If we go back to March 20 and the inception of all this, we got $1.8 million at that time in ESRS. And then in December, we got another 7.6. Now in March, we're facing we're probably going to get another $15 million. So the funding is out there, the funding will be coming in. That's going to help considerably on that general fund account. It's going to take the strain off of it, what we have to accomplish here with the kids and getting them caught back up again. As far as the there's another one just came out that I was looking at. It's April 13. Governor Wolf also mentioned that there's going to be $10.8 million to expand STEM education, our computer science in the schools. So there are there is money out there to go after, and then we're getting to come in and help this budget and to keep from increasing the millage in our school district. As far as the logistics side of it, I'm on the curriculum committee. We have a plan in place. Starting in the summer, we'll be doing recovery for nine through 12 students. The summer school elementary will be approximately 16-plus days in person. Transportation will be provided with them, and there's going to be limited stops on that as well. Secondary, in-person, provide their own transportation. There'll be two courses, possibly three, we talked about, might be offered, as well as driver's education. We're still working on plans for the fall. We want to try to implement some of the some of the help in the core subjects in all grade levels, K through 12. So we're working on that right now, and I believe if once our committee gets together here in May, we can accomplish some of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Bob Renzi.
Schools reopening was merely the first step toward addressing the long the lost learning brought about by COVID. Students did not get all the curriculum content instruction they would have received in a normal school year in 2020. Surveys have shown that students were less prepared this year for grade-level work due to the pandemic shutdown at the end of the previous school year. They will probably also be less prepared for the next school year this fall after a year-long pandemic. It's crucial, especially in all the elementary grades, to tackle this problem in many ways. For Connelsville, finances did not be a problem. Our district received nearly $15.3 million in aid from the American Rescue Plan signed by President Biden. This is more than any other district in Fayette Green and West Morton County by far. Of that $15.3 million, 20% must be used to address learning loss and to support the needs of students of low-income families and those with disabilities. The rest can be used for technology, cleaning supplies, professional training of staff, food service, and mental health support. All funds must be used by September 2024. How to address the lost learning should be a group project involving administrators, teachers, and parents to identify the needs and resources available to address these learning gaps. Some school districts already have planned summer classes. Other implementations could include smaller class size by hiring more staff, in-school tutoring, and after-school programs, just to name a few. This is one of the most important endeavors school districts will ever undertake. Without careful thought and discussion about the most workable solution, it could result in many students never catching up. The major problem will be getting students who need the most help to participate in the programs available to them.
Thank you. Okay, next up for question number two, we have Donald Grinaldo.
Learning loss, lost learning, I would like to challenge us to think about it a little differently. Unfinished learning could be more accurate. Unfinished learning is a better description of our circumstances of the last past year. Because of school closings, access technology, and other factors, this learning has been interrupted. When something is lost, control over it is often no longer in your hands. However, when something is unfinished, it suggests a project that's not yet completed but can be. Unfinished learning is not meant to downplay the challenges ahead. There is no sugarcoating that this year has been challenging for our students, parents, and educators, but there are things that have gone well. Some students have flourished in the remote learning environment. The learning loss, to use that term, occurred, can be blamed on the pandemic, but what also needs to be addressed are the great lengths that we are instituting this summer, which includes summer opportunities for our students, such as free classes for credit recovery. These classes will be in-building with in-person educators, which will allow the students their personalization attention that they will need to help to build back their learning loss. Learning to allow them to progress and meet grade-level criteria. In the past few months, we've allowed our students to have the option to be in brick-and-mortar and online. It's worked for many. We need to get back to in-class, brick-and-mortar in front of our staff. They are trained to do the job that we need to get our students their unfinished learning accomplished. ESER, as many of others have set up here, will fund that. 20% of $15 million. If we can't do something to help our children with that, we need to reconsider why we're here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our final candidate to answer question number two this evening is going to be Dave Panzella.
Okay, we have two parts to that question. I believe financially, as everyone else has stated, we should be good with the money, but we must spend it wisely, and we must use it to the best of our abilities for the students, the staff, and the district. Now, as far as logistically, I feel that we're we should be okay also. We can work with the administration, the teachers, the faculty, and bring in whatever we have to do and let them put together a good plan. And we may have to tweak it now and then, but I'm sure they can put together a good plan for these kids to get them back to where they should be, or which would be even better in my eyes, would be even a little further ahead. And I know Mr. Martre touched on curriculum. I can also say that we do have a I'm in cyber and technology, and anybody that knows me can't understand why. But anyway, the good news is, though, I've learned in life and business and everything that whatever you're doing, you want to put together a good team. So we have put together a great team with teachers, administrators, principals, guidance counselors, assistant principals, people from cyber, people from technology. We've been meeting every few weeks. They're putting together things for the cyber, for summer school, for the left behind, for everything. Emails, demos, they're really doing a great job. And I got to say, it's all them. It's the team, and I think it's a winning team, and I think we'll come up with a great plan, and I think we'll be able to get these kids back to where they need to be, or like I said, further ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to all the candidates for their answer to question number two. Again, starting with the third question, the order is going to be different as they were selected randomly at the beginning. So the candidate answering first for question number three is going to be James Moore. Once again, once James gets to the podium, Joe Abramowitz from the Courier will read the question, and then each candidate will have two minutes to answer. Mr. Moore?
When budgets get tight, some of the easiest cost-saving programs to target can be performance arts. Connelsville area students routinely distinguish themselves in instrumental and musical endeavors, which combine to make the district a pioneer and leader in musical theater programs. Do you view performance art as being vital to district curriculum?
Short answer to that is yes. I believe it takes, what do we call it, we used to call it three As, academics, arts, and athletics, for a school district to succeed in providing a strong and well-rounded When it comes to cuts, we need to look at each program independently, and that goes for any program, in any one of them three As. If we are having trouble funding a program, we need to look out and see what's available to help fund that program and keep it going. I don't like to see any program get cut. I mean, I myself try to bring new programs into the community all the time. There's other ways to fund some of this. We need to look at the community again. The board does need the help of the community just as much as we need to help the students. We just need to find ways to keep all the programs. But yes, arts and music play a vital role in many children's lives. It helps a lot of children through hard times. It helps bring out special things in some students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, answering second for the final question will be Randy Wyble.
I did some subbing in the performing arts. A few times I subbed, and I really enjoyed it. I think those students are a well-rounded bunch of kids. They know what they want, and they know what they like. And it gives them a, you know, a broader perspective towards their lifelong goals. It builds confidence and teamwork. Also, it builds their cognitive skills, and it develops a higher order of thinking skills. It also gives the students a well-rounded education with cooperative learning skills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number three for the third question will be candidate Bob Renzi.
We need to have a balanced focus on the academics, the arts, and fitness and athletics, as I said in my opening statement. They all have an importance in students' education and development. The performance arts would be considered part of the fine arts curriculum. The fine arts provide non-academic benefits such as promoting self-esteem, motivation, and creativity. This all begins with art and music classes and their primary grades, and continues later with choral band concerts and dance classes for many. Students engaged in the performing arts are able to engage both the mind and the body. It's important to get children involved in the performing arts at a very young age and to develop the necessary skills. We have always taken pride in our spring musicals the past 50 years, and I would support to continue that into the future. Performers see the world in a whole new way. This is all done through speaking, dancing, singing, the pit orchestra, and all the behind-scenes jobs necessary. It provides a real sense of community pride. The performing arts, whether it be singing, dance, band, or stage acting, are a vital part of our curriculum. I have observed this firsthand from watching most of the musicals while I was an active teacher. I now have a young granddaughter who's in chorus, dance, plays music, and has aspiration to one day perform on the stage. As a school director, the performing arts would always have my full support.
Thank you. Okay, next up for question number three, we have Michael Omatic.
I believe the performing arts are just as important as any other program or extracurricular activity we have in the district. We should budget for these programs, just like we budget for our sports programs. I have had a discussion with our previous business manager about a line item in our budget for the performing arts. It did not get done, and I believe we need to have this discussion again. We need to create a line item in our budget for the performing arts. We have a family of a young lady that tragically lost her life, and that family donates to our music department in her memory. Their daughter was a music student in college. The money they donate is used to buy musical instruments, which the school district then matches the donation. The old instruments, I was told, were several decades old, and we should have never left them get that old before we replaced them. Our band uniforms were so old, they were literally falling apart. Once again, we should have never left the uniforms get to that condition. Since then, we purchased new band uniforms a few years ago. Our students in the performing arts should be treated the same as our athletes.
Okay, thank you. Next up for the final question will be David Martray.
Question on the performing arts, is it vital to the district curriculum? Absolutely, it's vital. And as long as I'm on the board, I'll support the performing arts because it benefits the kids. As far as social skills, it develops that, but also long-lasting relationships, it integrates other subject areas, the math, the reading, and so forth. So yes, we have to keep these kinds of subjects or music for the performing arts involved in our curriculum. As Mr. Omatic mentioned about the uniforms, when I was, my first year, it was brought to my attention, the uniforms were about 12 years old, and they were beyond being patched. And I went out and I looked at the uniforms. Mr. Grinaldo and I were both on the same committee. We talked with Jonathan Yulcy at the high school, and told him what he's going to have to do is develop, take it through protocol, go through the building principal, and take it to the top so it gets to the committee and the board level, and then we can vote on it. And fortunately, everything worked out real well because we got the instruments and got the band uniforms that were well-needed. Because some of the instruments were pretty old, they were 15-plus years. And as far as experiencing that, I look back in February of last year, when they had the 50th anniversary over at New Haven. And it was really neat, my wife and I attended that, and it was really neat to see all those people who had parts in all those musicals, all those years, and give their testimonies about how great it was and what it has done for them in their career. So as far as I'm concerned, it will always be in the budget, and I'll support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up for our final question is going to be Debbie Schubert Trader.
I also fully support the performing arts. Connelsville School District has always excelled in their musical and theater programs. As a matter of fact, they're some of the best in the area. In some cases, just as good as you would see in the professional area on Broadway Theater. We have many students whose talents are developed through these programs. That's mainly why they're so important. Whether it's singing, instrumental, or even talents in carpentry for the students who are building the sets for the musicals, or whether it's sewing for the students that are making the costumes, or perhaps bringing out leadership skills for those students that are doing the student directing. These are all really important roles, whether you're an usher, like I said, a student director. Every one of those roles brings out a talent that maybe that student didn't even realize they had. I know many students who have gone on for very successful careers due to the programs at Connelsville High School's musical department. We have many students who have gone on to singing careers, careers on Broadway, careers with lighting, and to let these programs go would be a terrible shame. I would totally support this because I feel that these musical programs are just as important as the academics that are learned in the classroom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up for the final question, we have Donald Grinaldo.
Yes, I support the arts as an important part of the curriculum here in Connelsville. Now, that's a statement, but here's some facts on that statement. The trend towards supporting the art education is certainly a positive one. The benefits that students reap from participating in many of these activities, research as shown, promote positive development, academic, social, and emotional realms of the whole child. If you compare music and mathematics, besides beginning with the same letter, there's an increased number of studies that focus on the participation in music activities and cognitive development suggest that the two are closely related. These experiences appear to involve forms of mathematic reasoning. Theater and drama. Studies have shown the development of middle and high school students, exploration of theater and drama, does develop reading proficiency. The pride of our music band, chorus, can be seen every time a student takes the stage or the field, from their marrying parents and families and the normal citizens of our community. We have people who come outside of our community to come to our musicals, for example. Keeping these events during the pandemic has not been an easy, especially with all the in-person restrictions put on by Harrisburg. The show must go on will be one that occurs in Connelsville Area School District during these pandemic times and beyond. It's often said, it takes a village to raise a child. We owe our children a village of opportunities in the arts to prepare them to be the next generation in the village. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up for the final question will be Dave Panzella.
Simple answer to the question is yes, I do support the performing arts. I support all the extracurriculars at the school district. I think each student needs the chance to excel in whatever they endeavor, whether it's sports, the performing arts, academics, whatever. I personally did have two daughters. I had one in performing arts in the school, and I had one in athletics. So as we were cheering at different sporting events, we were also at concerts, and also flew to Florida so we could cheer on the band as they paraded down Main Street at Disney. So yeah, I know both ends, and I'd also support them financially as much as we can with the performing arts and the athletics. And also, I know I heard about the band uniforms. I do believe, yes, they were a good thing also. I believe they were paid for. That's another thing that we got to pay for through the bond refinancing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our final candidate answering the last question of the evening is going to be PJ Kart.
Not only do I support the arts, but instead of just talking about is it vital to the curriculum, we should actually be looking at how can we expand the performing arts in Connelsville. We have many students that go on and make careers in it. We have many students that get full scholarships to college because of the arts, so we have to do everything we can to give them those opportunities. As we saw at New Haven with the 50th anniversary, many students have made careers of this, teaching it as well as performing. We had kids there that had been on Broadway as part of their careers. And I would put our district's musicals up against any other districts, and can't say enough about the kids. I first became involved in the musicals when my son was in seventh grade. Mr. Haynes called and asked us, would we do costuming? The person, the Wednesday before, or the Saturday before the poster was due, decided not to do it anymore. So he called me and my wife. We had never done it. We didn't know what we were doing, but we knew it was the right thing for the kids, so we said sure. Imagine what it felt like when we walked up, and he said, hey, I need you to have everything ready for the picture for the poster on Wednesday. Well, thanks to Chip Rowan at Community Ministries, we were able to buy a bunch of stuff really cheap, and that's when I really became hooked on musical rather than just sitting in the crowd and watching it. And since that time, I've also helped at the high school. Proud to say, helped start the Parents Boosters Club for the musical a few years back, and served as the president of that organization for two years to help offset some of the costs because it is a continuous fight to get money for the musical, and it shouldn't be. Also helped get the game of small chance license so that we could do 50/50 performances. And knowing that our students make a career of it, we need to, like I said, look at expanding it. And I would like to actually see us do a feasibility study to see if we might be able to do a performing arts academy at the high school and take it even a step further. If you elect me, you definitely will have a friend in the art, and you don't just have to take my word for it. I'm the only candidate whose sign is in the wind at Atkins Music. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. That concludes the question and answer portion of this evening. As we explained at the beginning, each candidate will now have the opportunity to come up, and they will give a one-minute closing statement. The order that they will be appearing in, again, was selected with lottery at the beginning, and starting this evening with her closing statement, will be Debbie Schubert Trader.
I first want to thank Armstrong Cable and the Daily Courier for giving us this opportunity for the forum. My campaign is simple. I'm running for school director because I want to make Connelsville School District better, and I want to do what's best for the students. I would appreciate your vote on election day. Thank you.
Okay, up next for his final statement will be Dave Panzella.
I'd also like to thank Armstrong and the Daily Courier for this evening. I hope that I answered everyone's questions. I hope for everyone's support for this reelection, and I thank everybody for the opportunity to be able to serve them, and I hope that I'm able to serve them for another four years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up will be David Martray.
Just like to thank everybody that's involved in this evening, in the forum, and if reelected, I will say that I will work as hard as I can to be a good steward of our tax dollars, and also to make sure that our children get a proper education the week and forth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up fourth for their closing statements will be Bob Renzi.
The decisions school directors make directly or indirectly affect every student, district employee, and citizen within the Connelsville Area School District. A community is only as good as our public schools. It's not the job of the school director to micromanage the district's affairs. It's our job to set policy and hire the best people from positions available. We need to respect the opinions of the other board members and work together as a group of nine, not five or six. I want to thank the Courier and Armstrong for organizing this forum to give the voters a chance, including myself, to hear from all the candidates. Right now, I'm not sure I'm even voting for as yet, but I do want to wish best of luck to all the other candidates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up giving their closing statement will be Randy Wyble.
In closing, I would like to thank Armstrong Cable and the Daily Courier for sponsoring this night. I would like to thank all the people who are supporting me and believing in me. And to the voters that listen and believe what you have heard, only you can make the difference. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next, we have Donald Grinaldo.
I would also like to thank the Daily Courier, Armstrong Cable, for organizing and hosting this event. And I would like to thank the candidates behind me and on either side who have taken the time to answer the questions for our taxpayers, parents of this district. I am not running against anyone. I'm running for something, to be your school board director for a second term. Thank you very much. Stay safe out there. God bless, and good night.
Okay, thank you. Up next for their closing statements will be James Moore.
I would also like to thank everybody for being here, and thank Armstrong and the Daily Courier for giving us a chance to speak today. I have been told by many that being on the school board is a thankless job. I do not see it that way. I see it as an opportunity to prepare future generations to succeed by making the right decisions now. There's nothing more satisfying than seeing our students succeed and move on to greater things. If elected, I will do everything I can in cooperation with the board to help move the district back into a position of strength in academics, athletics, and arts. I will listen and communicate with anyone who has input on what they see as an issue or strength within the district, and work to correct or enhance those issues and strengths. Communication is key to creating a strong district, and I believe that a board that works together and communicates with others within the district and the families of this district can be what truly reinvigorates the district. We must do everything we can to support and provide for the students in all facets of their education and prepare them for the next phase of their lives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next will be PJ Kart.
Thank you to Armstrong and the Daily Courier for putting this together. It was a great opportunity for the voters to hear from us, and to you at home, thank you for watching and for your time and attention this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak directly to you, and hopefully tonight, you've seen my passion for the students of this district and wanting to see things be better and make sure we live up to the district's mission statement of providing them with the best opportunities possible. If elected, I will work continuously toward that effort and work toward a more collaborative effort between parents, teachers, students, board members, and administrators working together in the same direction, turning to evidence-based practices and best practices as we seek to make changes. Also, want to stress, I think I'm the only candidate up here that has graduated from the local government academy that trains officials through a multi-month process about your role in public service. And if elected, I want to address several things, answer the questions tonight, but also early literacy so that students aren't dropping out and at risk for dropping out the lost learning. Implement an early college program for the career in high school. Look at the Performing Arts Academy at the high school. We have so much potential in this district, and if we're all working together and moving in the same direction, there's no stopping us. Again, my name's PJ Kart, and I would appreciate your vote and support on May 18th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our final candidate giving their closing statement this evening will be Michael J. Omatic. O'Matic.
I would like to thank the Daily Courier and Armstrong for hosting this forum. The Connelsville School District, as well as all school districts in the United States, have had to deal with this virus. It has been an unprecedented time in our history. It has not been easy as a board member to make decisions because there is no blueprint on what to do. My personal struggle with decision-making has been trying to do the right thing for the students' education as well as their safety. And if reelected, I will continue to be an advocate for their education as well as their safety and for the taxpayers of this district. I would also like to thank all the parents for their understanding and patience during this time. Hopefully, when we come back in the fall, there will be a sense of normalcy, and thank you for your support.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you to everyone for this evening. Thank you, first of all, to all of the candidates for coming and giving the, the taxpayers and the voters an opportunity to get to know them a little bit better. Thank you to you viewers. I hope you enjoyed the evening and found it interesting and informative. Thank you to the Connelsville Area Community Ministries for allowing us to use this beautiful theater as a venue for our event, and a big thank you to our hosts this evening, the Connelsville Daily Courier and Armstrong. Remember, folks, May 18th is the primary election. Please get out and vote if you can. Polls open at 7:00, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you.